Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Once again, good evening. We would like to welcome you all to the Board of Education Candidates Forum, and we want to thank our candidates for coming in this evening and sharing your information with the public this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Life Center here at the college, we are in partnership in presenting this to you this evening. We hope that you enjoy it. We hope that it's informative and it will help you make a decision on your voting. Early voting is coming almost less than a month, so we ask that, you know, everyone get out and vote, or if you have any questions, call your election board. And as the League of Women, we're here to help you. I would like to, at this particular time, give you our two moderators, Malcolm Funn, please, and Lynn Zuzza.
Good evening. I'm Malcolm Funn, as she just stated.
And I'm Lynn Zuzza, as she just stated. We are very grateful for the partnership with the College of Southern Maryland and the support we've received from Erica Fisher, Hannah Cooksey, and the IT Department and students at the College of Southern Maryland. Would Erica and Hannah please stand that we can recognize your contribution to this effort? And the rest of the team.
We'd also like to acknowledge the Calvert Broadcast for their assistance for live streaming this, YouTube-ing it, and all of the technical stuff that they're doing. Let's thank them. And obviously, we are also grateful for the candidates' willingness to participate, and the members of the audience. You can give yourselves a hand as well. You took time from your busy schedule to join us tonight, and we thank you for that. We would like to express a special thanks to you for our outreach partners as well. We have worked with these organizations for many years and look forward to our continued partnership. And if they are members of that organization here, would you please stand as I call the organization Concerned Black Women of Calvert County? NAAC Calvert County Branch. Omega Pi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Southern Maryland Chain Chapter of the Links, Inc. Sustainable Calvert Network. And Tri-County Maryland Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc.
Now Malcolm's the lawyer here, but he asked me to go through the rules for this form so that everybody understands. First of all, please turn off all your cell phones and electronic devices. Displays of campaign paraphernalia, buttons, t-shirts, signs, or anything that supports a particular candidate are not permitted in the auditorium. No photographs or recordings may be taken during the forum by anyone except the Calvert County Government, public broadcast representatives. The video of the forum will be available on YouTube. Search for "Calvert County Government" shortly after the forum. Your participation constitutes agreement to appear in any recording. Your participation in this forum constitutes acknowledgement that you cannot use, broadcast, or print forum content without the permission of the League of Women Voters of Calvert County. Now that's as far as everyone. As far as the audience, please refrain from applauding or in other ways demonstrating support or non-support for a candidate. Questions for the candidates from the audience are written on League-supplied 3x5 index cards, handed out to a question screening team. You can receive cards from and pass your questions to our voters. Raise your hand, and the person with the cards will hand them out to you.
And now the rules for the candidates. A candidate may not participate in the forum unless at least one primary or general election opponent also participates. This is a forum, not a debate. Candidates will remain behind the table. The candidate may stand or remain seated when answering a question or making a statement. No questions will be provided in advance to any candidate. The first responder to each question and the closing statement will rotate based on a predetermined League-generated random speaking sequence. Not every candidate will be asked every question. A candidate must answer each question posed to them, but may also use a portion of their time to respond to any question previously asked. Previously asked questions will not be repeated. However, candidates will be given a notepad. You may take notes and may ask a moderator to repeat a question the first time it is asked, but you may not ask the moderator to repeat it a previous question. Each candidate will be allowed one and a half minutes, and those that don't understand the minutes, that's 90 seconds, to answer each question. One and a half minutes or 90 seconds for a closing statement. In order to have time for more questions, there will not be opening statements. The timekeeper will hold up a sign when 30 seconds remain. And will hold up a sign when 15 seconds remain. Oh, one minute. Let's go back to one minute, 30 seconds. See, I was going, no, I got confused. And then after, what is it, five seconds left? What's the last second? Oh, stop. And then when you stop, you will be allowed time to complete that sentence, and then the bell will ring. Unfortunately, we don't have a trapdoor to drop you through, so please respond to the bell. There will be no time allotted for rebuttals, and the candidates will not interrupt one another and will refrain from personal attacks.
Our candidates this evening are for the Office of Board of Education for Calvert County. The candidates are Scott Devine, Scott Fowler, Lisa Grennis, who is unable to attend this evening, Christina Hall, Camille Calisi, Joseph Marcio, Tracy McGuire, Jana Post, and Damian Villanova.
With respect to the order in which questions will be answered by the candidates, an online application called random.org was used. The candidates' numbers were determined by their order on the ballot. For example, eight, nine candidates are running for that office, but only eight are present tonight. Seven. I got seven. I'm a graduate of Calvert County School, so I can count up to 10. Scott Devine is, well, is the first name on the ballot and therefore is candidate number one, but that's not the case now. Candidate number one is Scott Fowler, for tonight's purposes. The candidates' numbers were determined by their order on the ballot. Scott, no, I didn't say that. Scott Fowler is the second name on the ballot and therefore he's candidate number two. But let's forget that. He's candidate number one, since he's the second one and the first one is not here. The application randomly selects the order in which candidates answer the questions.
Okay. The first question will be answered by four candidates, followed by a second question that will be answered by the last four candidates. So the first, let's see, and the candidates are Mr. Marcio, Ms. Calisi, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Post. Pardon? Mrs. Post, I'm sorry. How should the school district work with behavioral issues in the classroom? Mr. Marcio.
The school district work with behavioral issues in the classroom. Well, first and foremost, I think the best thing to do is figure out why the behavioral issues are happening. You know, it's possible a student's got something more going on at home that needs to be addressed and may need help with that, maybe causing the behavioral issues. Each kid and each situation is going to be kind of unique, so we've got to figure out why what is happening is happening and then figure out what is potentially the best course of action. So, you know, sometimes that could possibly be removal from the classroom for a short period of time. We need to have alternatives to be able to do that and continue that child's education as well without it impacting the greater classroom as a whole. But we've just got to look at each one individually because one size does not fit all.
Ms. Calisi.
So with regards to behavioral issues, I think it's important first for teachers to be aware of what all is available to them to address behavioral issues. So any policies that are pertinent, any staff or other specialty members of the school system that are available to them, and then in agreement with what Mr. Marcio said, they need to figure out what's causing the behavioral issues. Being a parent of a non-speaking child, behavior is communication, and behavior is communication for everyone. So you really want to assess what's happening before the behavior, during the behavior, after the behavior to try to determine what the cause is of the behavior, and then you can figure out how you appropriately want to address it. So again, the best way for us to support that is to have people be aware of what all is available to them so that once they establish that there is a behavior, they can use the mechanisms available to then start to service both the teacher and the student to get them to a place where they can both be functional in the classroom again.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler.
So, in my opinion, you can't have one uniform policy for behavioral problems for all students in all situations. Each situation, every occurrence, isn't necessarily the same as the other. So first, you need to kind of, they should identify the actual situation itself, what's warranted, what isn't. You know, like a child being violent is very different than a child just talking out of turn and not listening. Like she was saying, the teacher should be informed of the policies that the county has in place so that they know what they can do and what they can't do. Something I think that is important, though, is the teachers need to feel supported by the administration. I think there, a problem can occur if a student is acting out and the teachers set, decide on a course of action that falls inside of a policy, and administration comes in and kind of undermines it and lessons the blow. The school as a whole should have a united front as to how we want to deal with different behavioral issues in those situations, both from the administration and the teacher's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mrs. Post.
So I think that ensuring that we have adequate staffing at our schools is an important part of that, including safety resource officers or safety advocates, behavioral specialists, psychologists, guidance counselors, and additional support staff. I also think that ensuring that the policies and the procedures that we have, procedures, excuse me, that we have in place now are able to be applied effectively. So I think that, you know, evaluating those and understanding what's happening. Also, being in support and listening to what the staff are saying and administration supporting the teachers and staff when there are issues that arise. And lastly, recognizing that even though we may have some of these limitations, a lot of them may come from a state and a national level. So also, as a BOE candidate, to really advocate at those levels to ensure that things get changed so that we don't have so many things going on in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have a different question for the next four persons. First question is for Ms. Hall. How would you encourage parental involvement in school board decisions, especially relating to topics such as CRT and gender studies?
Parental involvement, correct?
Right.
Okay. Okay, how would I encourage parental involvement? In CRT and what? I'm sorry.
Gender studies.
Okay, CRT and gender.
How would you encourage parental involvement in school board decisions, especially relating to topics such as CRT and gender studies?
Okay. Okay. So, in my opinion, I think that the school board needs to get back to the basics of reading, writing, and math skills. School is encouraged to teach basic life skills, basic life skills. When it comes to CRT and gender issues or gender, everything revolving around gender, other than biological, male and female, you're talking about health class. And I support LGBTQ, but I believe that overall government and church and everything has kind of taken over the basic of family functionalities. You know, I believe that CRT and gender conversations really should be set at home, and I think that we shouldn't be teaching anything in school other than the basics, the reading, the writing, the math skill, and... I saw that thing and I got distracted. Sorry. And I think that the serious questions need to be answered at home. I don't think that children at young ages need to be exposed to all of this advanced sexuality and gender-specific roles and stuff because girls are able to be, are able to do... Can I finish the sentence? Okay, girls are able to do the things that boys do, and boys are able to do the things that girls do. We are losing out on the gender-specific roles.
Thank you. Mr. Villanova. Yes, same question.
Kim, please repeat it.
How would you encourage parental involvement in school board decisions, especially relating to topics such as CRT and gender studies?
Like I always said in previous forums, the school system for K-12 has always been, and I believe, firmly believe, that it's a place for reading, writing, science, math, social studies, those of that nature, basic studies, basic learning skill sets that advance K-12 when they move into the civilian sector. I believe that every child and their understanding of identity should be respected. I think that every child, whether they choose to walk a different way or look a different way or identify themselves a different way, should be respected. And that's for, as far as the gender studies. CRT, I've mentioned how I thought, my thoughts about CRT, it has no place in the K-12 environment. It is a collegiate study. It goes back to 16, I'm sorry, to the 1800s with Karl Marx's, where it was all about creating division, division upon the oppressed and oppressor. It moved on to throughout the country and the world to where we are today, where it talks about critical race theory in reference to ethnicity. I'm not going to argue with it. All I'm going to say is this, it creates division. And division is, I think we've seen enough of division within the world, within our nation, and I think that the K-12 does not need an additional mechanism to create division. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire, same question.
Thank you. So CRT is not in the Calvert County Public Schools curriculum, and neither is the specific gender studies. Things happen in classrooms, questions get asked, and teachers have to respond. Your school board members cannot respond to a specific teacher activity because the school board meets twice, maybe three times, a month. And if something's happening in your school, you need to first go to the teacher. If you don't get a satisfactory response from the teacher, you go to the principal. If you don't get a satisfactory response from the principal, you go to the principal's boss, which is in the administration building. If you're still not satisfied, you can come to a school board member, and that school board member will turn to the superintendent and say, "Investigate this and report back to the board what's going on." That's how it works. That's how parent involvement in school board decisions can happen. Also, the policies that we're reviewing are online. The budget's available for review online. When a school board hires a superintendent, there's a community activity to get community input. And I would also say that I would, if elected to the school board, I would love to have a facilitated community conversation similar to What Counts, which was done a few years ago at Huntington High School, and it was a great opportunity for people to come together and talk about what they wanted to see in public school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. The next question. In light of the recent court ruling on CRT in Calvert County Public Schools, how would you ensure that an age-appropriate and accurate inclusion of Black history as a part of American history be implemented in Calvert schools? The first person in line to address that would be Mr. Villanova.
Wow, okay, I don't know how that happened again. So I am one, well, first, before I start, can you repeat the question again?
In light of the recent court ruling on CRT in Calvert County Public Schools, how would you ensure that an age-appropriate and accurate inclusion of Black history as a part of American history be implemented in Calvert schools?
Okay, so as we already know, and for ones who don't know, the Board of Education does not create curriculum. It comes down from the state of Maryland. So once we get the state of Maryland curriculum as far as what's being taught to the schools in all the counties in the state of Maryland, that's what we get. Now, how would I personally, I will legislate, I will, not legislate, I will talk to county commissioners, I'll talk to our delegates. I have great relationships with them. For the ones that are also coming on board also, they're the ones that actually... For the ones that are also coming on board also, they're the ones that actually control what's going to be going on as far as the, what's being taught to the county, okay? First. Second thing, I'm a huge fan of Black history for obvious reasons. I think we should go more before, more than, you know, Martin Luther King, we should go more than Frederick Douglass. There's more out there, there's more Black Americans that have done great things, past and current. I mean, we could even go from, you know, one thing as far as going to President Obama to being the first Black president, to, you know, go as far as back as, you know, Kurt Smoak being the first Black mayor of Baltimore City, where I'm from. So those are things that are historic, that should be taught, and I'm a huge fan of making sure that those things, those things that look like they're small, might be a big thing because of a Black and Brown kid might know or can know where he came from or where he or she came from. So for obvious reasons, I'm a huge fan of implementing Black history within the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villanova. Mr. Fowler.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
In light of the recent court ruling on CRT in Calvert County Public Schools, how would you ensure that an age-appropriate and accurate inclusion of Black history as a part of American history be implemented in Calvert Schools?
Okay. So, it's been a little while since I've been in high school and taken a history class. So I think the first thing that I would want to do is honestly myself get a bit of a review of what is taught in like US history class in high school. To the best of my knowledge, I don't remember of any actual history class being taught in middle school and elementary school. I do know like social studies is taught, but I don't honestly remember to the extent at which it goes into like history, history. So as far as the age appropriateness, I would say probably including, like, including it within the US history class that students have to take in high school. What's going on? I would also say that once, like, we have a better understanding of how inclusive the entirety of Black history is inside of the US history class, there's a very good chance that we would need to expand that some and, like, develop more of it rather than just the basics that, you know, people are taught as of what I remember, which would be Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, that kind of stuff. As far as the CRT stuff, I think it's important to mention all of the negative aspects as well of what has happened in regards to Black history within this country. And yeah, that's how.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mrs. Post.
I'm going to try and talk fast because I want to answer both questions. In regards to encouraging parental involvement, I think for starters, we can respect, listen, and address the concerns when parents attempt to communicate. As far as the CRT ruling in the recent court case, as a number of folks here have said, there is no official CRT curriculum being taught in CCPS. That is true, and that is even aligned with the CCPS briefing in this particular case. There are, however, tenants of CRT that are being taught, and in some cases, it's very hard to really see or understand, and it could be, in some cases, that it's being done, and some may interpret it as being sneaky or underhanded. I can tell you that I would, why I would bring, I would work to bring transparency and certainly work cooperatively with parents and the community so that they are not forced to communicate with our Board of Education through attorneys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Ms. Calisi.
So I'm also going to try to quickly address both questions because in the first question, it was around what, how will we encourage parental involvement and not specifically what our views were on either CRT or gender studies. And so I think what's very important for that, as far as what the board can do, is to assure the accountability and engagement at the superintendent level because we do have a culture issue within, or several culture issues within CCPS, and so we need to make sure that the culture coming from the leadership is strong so that it can then filter through so that teachers feel supported enough and have enough time and bandwidth to do the jobs that they are paid to do while also being able to engage with parents and administration and work and collaborate together. So that's the response to the second question, and then going to the third question. In light of the ruling, it's a little bit more of disdain. So I would want to have awareness of the current curriculum that exists and what's currently being taught, and be inquisitive and probe and ask questions and always want to know what exactly is being taught, what's happening, what types of books are being used and whatnot. Support processes that ensure a culture that supports the appropriate teaching of all cultures. Support system-wide efforts to program on different cultures and different things because it's not just about what's taught in the classroom, it's how the whole system functions with regards to racial differences, gender differences, or whatever. And so that programming can be affected that way. And support staffing to make sure that there are enough teachers to do the core programming so that there can be additional specialty programming relative to all of the different cultures that exist within our community, since it is a public school system.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi.
This is the next question. And respondents to this would be Ms. Hall, Mr. Marchino, and Ms. McGuire. The question is, how will you attract and retain a diverse workforce, especially teachers? And I was asked to remind those of you, you can keep your mask on, but when you're speaking, could you take it off because you're coming across very muffled and people cannot understand How will you attract and retain a diverse workforce, especially teachers? Ms. Hall, you would be the first one to respond to that.
All right. Teachers want to be valued for their hard work, dedication, and capabilities. Teachers should be compensated for the extra time they spend over and beyond their planning period and not be taken for granted. Start out salary for teachers, get them here. Start out salary for teachers, get them here, but not much, but there's not much room for raises or bonuses until this year, when it was put in the budget because they fought for it. As I understand, to keep them from leaving Calvert County when a close-by county values their teachers with more income or raises. PG County at this point, as far as I understand, is their teachers are making more than ours. Not that, you know, that can't be changed. But there's also considerable retention with students at a high school level who are doing the TAM program, who could facilitate in-classroom programs, who could help and make sure that, you know, like, they could be an aide or an assistant to a teacher to see if they do want to be a teacher. There are other programs at the college level, and you could give the students, I really don't like that. It's very distracting. Sorry. You could, you could give the students service hours for completion of extra time and extra hours within other volunteer programs along with the structured teachers that are already here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Marchino.
All right. So I think first and foremost, we need to seek and retain the most talented teachers with the best skill sets for our children. I think in doing that, we will enable, we will bring in a very diverse group, whether it be their cultural diversity, but more importantly, probably their diversity of thought. We need to, you know, pay our teachers well, take care of them. We need to support them, we need to defend them, and give them the tools they need to succeed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. McGuire.
So I believe that everybody wants to participate in a world-class school system.
I think you'll have to lean closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Thank you. I believe that everyone wants to participate in a world-class school system. A world-class school system is a school system where all the students feel welcome, they feel like they belong. And, is that better? And they believe that the adults around them are there to help and support them so that they can be their best selves academically, socially, and emotionally. A world-class school system is a school system where teachers want to teach because they're well compensated, respected by the administration, and esteemed in the community. And finally, a world-class school system is a school system where administration seamlessly runs everything, like, there's no friction, and that's the goal. And a lot of that goal work is going to be done through contract negotiations with the bargaining units. And so if I was elected to the school board, I would try to persuade the school board that we should start negotiations by agreeing with the bargaining units on the elements of a world-class school system, and then ask both negotiating teams to negotiate from that point for each article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. The next question. If you were elected to the board, what are you going to do to improve the somewhat hostile environment hovering around Calvert County Public Schools? First person there would be Mr. Marchio, please.
Repeat the question, please.
If you were elected to the board, what are you going to do to improve the somewhat hostile environment hovering around in Calvert County relating to the public schools?
I think the first thing I would do is definitely lift the 10-person limited board education meetings, give the public more of a chance to speak, and give more people an opportunity to speak at the board. I would look at having more of a town hall type of forum in where we can get questions from the audience and respond to them. There may be some challenges to that, but I think those are challenges that can be overcome. Think to, you know, combat the perceived hostile environment around the school system, it's got to start with communication, having an honest dialogue, listening to people, taking in all viewpoints, and figuring out what the best course is, but actually making sure people think that they're being heard and understood and not brushed aside, and that they're getting some actual answers, and their needs are being met.
Thank you, Mr. Marchio. Next person, Ms. Calisi.
I'm actually going to try to keep my answer to this pretty simple. I think that the first thing that needs to be done, of many things that needs to be done, is just modeling the behavior that we would like for the constituents of the county to have with regards to the board. So if the board itself, or the boards of the county have perceived conflict or issues, and it doesn't look like that they work together and things like that, then why would the community then approach them in a different way? So as a board member, and I've said this before about supporting the current members of the board, you know, I may have opposing views, I'm definitely, I'm sure I have opposing views with the members of the board or members of this panel who could get elected to the board. So my first priority is to make sure that I have a collaborative working engagement with them in order to try to get things done. And then once it's seen that we do work together in order to move things forward, the community can then engage as well, and we can all work together to listen and make sure that everyone is heard and make action on what we can make action on. But if there's hostility in all of the areas coming from one, two, or several components, it doesn't matter, you know, what we try to do with regards to the community, you know, they're still going to model what they see the boards doing with each other.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi. Next person, Mr. Villanova.
Can you repeat the question?
If you were elected to the board, what are you going to do to improve the somewhat hostile environment hovering around Calvert County Public Schools?
Okay. I'm going to answer that question, also the previous question in reference to creating, attracting and obtaining diversity within the school system. Income and mentorship. Income is definitely, everyone's motivated by money, everyone's motivated, you know, you're being compensated correctly, you're going to want to stay in that community. Mentorship. Mentorship is a big thing. Twenty-one years in the Marine Corps, mentorship was a big program that the Marine Corps pushed, and it was very effective. What I mean by that is having senior administrators take on these new teachers, walk them through some things, talk them through some things, cultivate a relationship. And now I'm going to go ahead and move down to the question that I was given. Outreach is one big thing, you know, when you had the Board of Education going out to the community and ball with themselves, you know, the same thing we were doing as far as the campaign, you know, bull roasts and things of that nature, we should go out there and communicate, take down, take off our jackets, and be within the community. Community involvement is a big thing also, you know, when they see us and they look at us, and they look at us as normal people, that's when we start winning souls and winning hearts. We got to, you know, move away from this big table that we sit ourselves behind and come out and be "normal people," quote unquote. And finally, I brought this up before numerous times, a town hall, and not just a town hall, we should have a town hall with the Board of Education and the commissioners there. We should also bring in the superintendent, bring everyone who has a hand within the county of Calvert County, where if a question is given to the members, they're actually able to make a decision right then and there with everyone who has a dog in the fight. Thank you so much.
You're going into another sentence. Thank you. We'll have, the next three persons will have this question. It's Ms. Hall, Ms. McGuire, and Ms. Post. The question is, the candidates for Board of County Commissioners have emphasized a lack of communication with the Board of Education. How would you increase the communication with the Board of County Commissioners? I'll repeat that question. The candidates that are running for Board of County Commissioners have emphasized or stated that there's a lack of communication with the Board of Education. How would you increase the communication with the Board of County Commissioners? Ms. Hall.
All right. Well, there are, so the candidates for County Commissioners have stated that...
Could you move your mic down to your floor?
Sorry. All right. So there's a lack of communication between the county commissioners and the Board of Ed. So I would propose a bi-monthly or weekly, I guess, meeting to discuss issues, new issues, already proposed issues from the county residents on a weekly basis because there's no I-in team, and as we all know, and we teach our kids, teamwork makes the dream work. I mean, that's it. So.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGuire, same question.
So I'm going to confess to a certain bias here in that the county commissioners are displeased with their response they get from the school system or the school board. They're displeased that they don't get to direct the school system budget. And the state of Maryland makes them our funding source. So that's how it works in Maryland. They're required to fund the school system. I was speaking with a candidate at an event earlier, a candidate for commissioner, and I said, "Look, we're all elected by the same voters. You don't have any more authority over the school board than the school board has over you. So we need to acknowledge that and work together as equals." We are, the school board is not subservient to the county commissioners. They are by law our funding source, but that is not a subservient position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Post.
I think that, you know, frequent meetings with some, you know, regularity would be a good place to start. And not just meetings, but meetings where, you know, everyone can have an opportunity to really talk openly and ask questions and understand some of the challenges that maybe the BOE is facing, and also for the BOE to listen and understand some of the challenges or the concerns or the pressure that the Board of County Commissioners are facing. And I think that overall, we just, we all have to do a better job at listening and respecting what the other person has to say. Not any one opinion or thought is 100% accurate, and I think with anything else, or with everything else, we have an opportunity to work together and compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. The next question. Do you support the LGBTQ resolution recently approved by the Board of Education? First person we will ask to address that is Ms. McGuire.
Yes, 100%. Thank you.
What an efficient answer. Thank you. Thank you. The next person, Mr. Fowler.
Is this in regard to the sports thing, or what is this in regards to?
The question is, do you support the LGBTQ resolution recently approved by the Calvert County Board of Education?
So I'm assuming that this is in regards to the allowing students in high school to choose which gendered sport they would like to play. I am conflicted here because while I want everybody to feel included, and no one to feel like they're on the outside, I genuinely feel allowing people to choose the gendered sport they'd like to play will disproportionately affect women's sports specifically. There are physiological differences between boys and girls that very much start to manifest once they hit high school age. So allowing a biologically male student to participate in the girls' track team will have a devastating outcome for those girls' sports. I really cannot support that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Villanova?
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yes. Do you support the LGBTQ resolution recently approved by the Calvert Board of Education?
Okay, so to answer the question, I support in part. Reason is because I believe that no one should be shunned, K-12 should be shunned or ashamed of the identity they choose. That's their perspective, that's how they want to be addressed or be identified as. So I support that piece. I do have two daughters, and I have a son, and I think that the, and going back to high school back in 1993, we had a female wrestler on the team, and the female wrestler was in the lightweight category. She actually did fairly well, but when she got to the more senior guys of wrestling, she actually, her molecular structure could not hold up to those wrestlers. Moving to my Marine Corps experience, when the DOD opened up some of the infantry jobs to all genders, infantrymen is required to carry a 65-pound pack on his back, an infantryman is required to have a 50-pound tube on his back, and there are studies that are out there, you can go check them out, that female could not handle that weight because of the, her molecular structure. So to that point, that's why I have my, I agree, but to a point, in reference to the supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villanova. Finally, Mrs. Post?
So I agree. I think I support that resolution in part, because certainly no one, any class of individual, should be treated differently, or mistreated, bullied, harassed, none of those things. But I support all the resolutions where all kids, all classes of kids are protected. I think that's most important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Okay, we've been at this for a little over, well, some 45 minutes. We think it's time for a break. We will resume in about 15 minutes. Thank you very much. Wait, 15 minutes?[835.69]
Hello. Hello, 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 hello? Hello?
No, it's not, though.
Check, check, check. Hello, everybody, hello. Let me turn up a little bit.
Definitely hears this loud.
Hello, could you, could you please return to your seats so that we can resume?
Shall, shall I use my tenor voice?
Hello, everybody, hello, 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 hello. If everyone could return to their seats, return to your seats.
Okay, we can tell who the school teachers are in the audience. Could you please, uh, return to your seats so we can resume? Unless you want to stay here all night. No, sir? Oh, okay. Do you need to eat? Okay. I take it everyone has had their break and ready to resume. We are, we are missing Mrs. Hall. Okay, okay.
While, while we're waiting for her, several of you have indicated that you want to, you're not sure how to get your questions up here. I have two comments to make in that regard. It will be physically impossible for us to ask all the questions that are submitted. But that is not to say you shouldn't put your cards in. If you have a question, write it down on one of the cards. Hold your hand up and somebody will come by and pick it up.
You should have a card like this. If you don't have a pen, the runner will give you a pen. There's a lady back there in the green. She has cards if you need a card. And I was remiss when I was giving, earlier, when I was giving to different organizations that were supporting this and were sponsors in partnership. For some reason or other, I neglected the Sigma Alpha Lambda chapter of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc. And by forgetting to mention them, they get special recognition now. Well, the rest of them are caught up in the mass of them, so... Uh, we are waiting for Ms. Hall. Don't worry about him. He's not a candidate.
Yeah, but I was being nice and open the door for him, my bad.
For the kids, yes. Okay, is everybody ready? Taking a deep breath? You've got water and you've taken care of other duties and responsibilities? So we've got a, we're going to go until about 8:30, it's about 7:33 now. This is the eighth question that we're going to ask. And this question is for Mr. Marchino, Ms. Calisi, and Mrs. Hall. And the question is, what is your position on book banning in classrooms and school libraries? What is your position on book banning in classrooms and school libraries? And Mr. Marchino, you'll be the first one to answer that.
It's Marcio.
Oh, Marcio, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Marcio, okay, thank you.
So, all right. As far as book banning in classrooms and school libraries, I don't necessarily agree with banning, however, we do need to take a hard look at what school, what books are in our classrooms and in our libraries and make sure they fit the curriculum and also are age-appropriate for whether they're in an elementary school, in a kindergarten classroom, in a middle school, in a high school, wherever they are. They need to be age-appropriate, they need to have some relevance to the curriculum of what is being taught, um, and have some educational value to our children, and also not be explicit, whether that be sexual in nature or otherwise.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Calisi?
So, I'm gonna try to answer a couple of questions, actually, that I wanted to address. My position on book banning is that I do not agree with book banning, I don't agree with the censorship or removal of particular books unless it is viewed by the school system as well as the parental community that those books are inappropriate, but not just, you know, overarching banning of books in any way, shape, or form. Regarding the question on supporting the LGBTQ resolution, I support the resolution, I also support the community, which, as you may notice, the way that I dress for these forums and different engagements that I go in are reflective of, you know, how I feel on certain issues. I try to be supportive of things through not just the words I say, but also through the clothing that I wear. So this is indicative of that. This public school system is meant to require, is meant to provide free and appropriate public education to all students within the public, and our community makeup is diversified, and thus, we need to support those students. There are mechanisms for parents who want to teach particular ideals to their students that gets away from the actual makeup of the community and the public at large. And, you know, that may be something that they want to consider if they want specific things happening for their children, but in the public school system, we have to support as many students as possible as required by the law. And then on the question of attracting and retaining a diverse workforce, I'm going back to the culture, the culture needs to be there to support the educators. I'm gonna say something that may be somewhat controversial, but I do think that in diversity, there needs to be a diversity of thought, so we need to figure out ways to program, I'm gonna finish that sentence, ways to program that increases the ability for current staff to matriculate upward through the pipeline, but also supports bringing outside specialty individuals in certain areas so that the management of those areas is stronger and can support the, the staff and populations that are under them, such as in the places of human resources, accounting, um, and different other facets of the school system.
That was the longest run-on sentence that I've ever acknowledged. There were a lot of semicolons in that sentence. Mrs., Mrs. Hall? You want me to repeat the question?
No, the, the question was, what is my position on book banning in school classrooms and libraries, correct? Okay, just making sure that I remembered it. All right, I, I do not believe in book banning in schools or classrooms, school classrooms or libraries unless found inappropriate in nature, like, um, the orientation of it and if it's not anything being taught. I don't think that books create people to become anything in particular. I think that books teach, you learn from books. I think that kids need an opportunity to give, be given a broader spectrum of subjects and beliefs and things to read. So, I think that is my answer.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. The next question, and the four candidates that will be called upon to answer it are Ms. Hall, Mrs. Post, Mr. Marcio, and Ms. McGuire. And the question is, what do you identify as a priority in the blueprint plan? The blueprint plan, of course, is the tool to implement the Kerwin Commission recommendations.
First?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not, okay.
Shall I repeat the question?
No, I just have to find the answer that I have written down for it. I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you repeat it? Yes, can you repeat it, please?
What do you identify as a priority in implementing the blueprint plan?
That did not much, thanks. Okay. All right, so I think prioritizing the unmet needs in which don't cost extra funding should take precedence, like creating a new, more rigorous accountability system. The students, at this point in time, have more accountability placed on them than most of the adult administration do, as I feel. I wouldn't know exactly how to deliberate funds until I knew the budget details. And I have some of them, but I'm not exactly sure how to, you know, borrow from Peter and pay Paul at this point. More classroom options for those students that don't fit in the most restrictive environment or the least restrictive environment are already a part of the blueprint for Maryland's future. At first, it would entail moving students around and retraining teachers, needing more specialized instruction than they already receive. In other words, expanding programs could still accommodate the students already in the schools, but would move them to different classrooms. That would be it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mrs. Post?
There are so many things about the blueprint. I will say that we don't fully know what, what the cost, the total cost of that blueprint is, and we also don't really know, uh, what the impacts will be to the public school budget or to our taxes at this point. So, the priority is, is understanding what resources and what amount of money is needed to implement this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. And finally, on this, not finally, uh, Mr. Marcio, please.
All right, um, very similarly, I think the, uh, the biggest priority on it is figuring out what the actual cost is and where the money's gonna come from. There's just not enough known on that at this point. We've got to figure out how we can actually incorporate that stuff without it completely bogging everything down from a budget standpoint and soaking up too much money. I'd also like to address a previous question regarding the LGBTQ resolution passed. As it's currently written, no, I don't support it. Everybody should feel welcomed and feel supported, however, my bigger issue with it is, you know, there, there is the sports aspect issue of it. There are clear differences between boys and girls, men and women, especially in athletics. But the bigger issue I have with it is the lack and erosion of safe spaces for young girls and young women, such as bathrooms. You know, maybe an extreme case, what happened in Virginia, but a policy just as that is what made it entirely possible. So, we, I think we need to look at it and fine-tune it a little bit, make sure everybody feels welcomed and supported, however, we have to make sure our girls and young women have safe spaces in school and fair competition in athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Marcio. Ms. McGuire?
So, as it goes to the Kerwin Commission, the priority areas, the one I'm focused on is teachers. Whatever we're talking about in the different priority areas for that work, teachers will be implementing it. So, uh, training new teachers, retaining teachers, that's gotta be the focus of the work. And I did not understand that question to be a question about budget, but a question about priorities. And so, within that Kerwin Commission, that's where I think we, we as a school system should focus our attention. I don't think that the Kerwin Commission allows you to do one or the other, so you're gonna have to do it all, but the people who are going to be doing it all are the education staff, and so, we need to work within the Kerwin requirements for, for teacher pay to make sure we can do it in Calvert County.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. You have to do it within the timeframe that you have.
How much time does she have?
You have any time left?
Oh, 30 seconds, gr- okay. The discussion about books being age-appropriate and all these things, the books in the libraries, the books that are in classrooms, they're chosen by educators. And if you don't know it already, Calvert County has some rock star librarians. And so, they are age-appropriate, they are being selected by educators who are sensitive to age-appropriateness. So, I am very confident in the education staff to make good choices for books.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Villanova, Mr. Fowler, Ms. Calisi. And that question is, do you support the 2021 strategic plan that the Calvert County Public School System developed containing the five goals? These five goals are equity, student outcome, climate and culture, workforce, and community engagement.
Can you repeat those five again?
The five goals are equity, two, student outcome, three, climate and culture, four, workforce, five, and community engagement.
That's gonna be challenging to answer within 90 seconds, but here we go. So, I'm not, I can't give an honest yes or no because assuming it's, I mean, you told five, five items right there that had to be identified. In reference to equity, I believe that equity is, you know, is, is no secret, is a byproduct of CRT, so no, I don't support equity, however, I do, uh, support that every child should be treated correctly. Every child should be treated, treated, um, according to their ability. In reference to, um, environment of the school, I think every school should be a safe environment, regardless of how they want to, uh, look at themselves, or be treated, or be identified as themselves, or anything like that. I think a child should not have to go to a school system, of any school system in Calvert County, uh, for that matter, and feel as though they'll be, uh, harassed, threatened, bullied, uh, it should be a safe space. And, and, and the administrator should be there to support, uh, that child within that safe space, uh, in creating a safe space. So, and finally, uh, I, again, that's a, that's a lot of five parts to answer that question and to be answered in 90 seconds, and, um, I, I yield my time if I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler?
Okay, so, as far as equity goes, um, my opinion on that is, you, you can't necessarily have equity, but what you can have is a qual- like, inequality of, uh, an attempt at equality of a start line. You're never gonna get everybody, uh, to all have the, the same grades, the same outcomes, uh, 'cause you don't have everyone put in the same amount of effort, you don't have everybody having, having the same amount of support systems at home. Like, the idea to, to attempt to have everyone succeed, you know, is, is what we all are here for, but you can't necessarily have equality of outcome, because you don't have equality of effort. As far as, uh, uh, climate and culture, um, I, I think it's a, a good thing for, you know, the, the school system to provide a, a culture where students feel open to be themselves and accepted and not feel as though they are, um, harassed, um, or being, like, unincluded and that, like, everyone should feel, like, safe and welcome wh- while they're in school. And, let's see. I think that's, uh, that's, yeah, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Fowler. Uh, Ms. Calisi?
Maybe I'm a little bit confused by the question, but I don't think so, so let me give my response. The question is, do you support the 2021 strategic plan? Yes, I support the plan, because the plan is a construct outlining the focal areas of greatest priority or focus for the school system, that they will then develop goals to address each of those different five focal areas. And so, yes, I support the plan, because I do believe that those are the five areas of greatest need, and then, I would want to further be very clear on what the goals were in each of those areas and how all of the different components of the school system are, are writing their goals, are identifying their goals to address each of those areas, and then, even more importantly than that, what the retrospection will be, um, after the fact, to assess what work was done, what went well, what didn't go well, and what needs to happen going forward, further, to then develop whatever the next strategic plan is, depending on what the timeframe of that strategic plan is. So, that, that's my answer.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi. The next question for you all, and the people who will be asked to respond to it are Mr. Fowler, Ms. Hall, Mr. Marcio, and Ms. McGuire. And the question is, what will you do to make sure that our teachers and staff do not fall behind on their salary steps? Also, make sure our bus drivers are supported. The first person I will call on to answer that is Mr. Fowler.
In order to ensure that our, our teachers and, um, uh, staff as a whole, uh, do not fall behind in terms of salary steps, I would say it starts with fiscal responsibility, making sure that the, the, the budget is created in a way that allows, uh, for, like, raises and, like, the annual bonuses and, and whatnot that the teachers are promised when they're hired. Which means, you, you have to make sure that there's not unnecessary spending, but at the same time, having money inside of the budget for unexpected, um, things to come up, such as what we saw in 2020 with the coronavirus stuff, although that would be an extreme scenario. I think to help with that, fostering a, a strong relationship with the county commissioners who do have to approve our budget would, would be very beneficial for us to make sure that we are able to, able to ensure those kind of funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Hall.
All right, can you read the second half of it about the bus drivers?
Well, it's, it's essentially the same thing about the bus drivers as the teachers, making sure that they get their steps, also make sure that the bus drivers are supported.
Okay, um, all right, so what will I do to ensure that the teachers and staff do not fall behind? Is that...
That's, that's it in salary.
I just wanna make sure. All right, so, to keep the teachers and the staff from falling behind, we should have implemented monthly encouragement through their staff of, you know, um, a reward system for the teachers. You know, who else wants to be recognized by their peers? I mean, like, I would love to be recognized by my peers. Positive only, positive. So, just clarifying. So, I think that it should be a monthly or whatever timeframe would be appropriate at that level of the school, and there should be some sort of reward system, you know? We, we work on rewards as well, whether that's monetary, whether it's, you know, food, weight loss, I mean, we all work on a reward system, whether you want to admit it or not. The bus drivers should be given their raises or their regular scale pay, um, after 19, like, I had friends who are bus drivers, my kids have gone to 12, 16 different schools, including ESY and summer school-related services, um, out of 24 schools in the county. I have probably about 30 bus I have probably about thirty bus drivers' names and aides in my phone. When they went on strike, I was there with them at the Board of Ed, siding with them. I actually wrote an email to the Board of Ed and to Dr. Curry explaining my disapproval of the treatment of the bus drivers. Our, oh, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mr. Marchio?
Biggest thing would be to take a really hard look at the budget, see where we can carve items out, where we can make cuts. That's something I'd do kind of every day in my day job. But figure out where we can squeeze the most out of the existing budget. One thing we could do is stop spending as much money as we, I'm not done yet. No, one thing we do is stop spending as much money as we do, which I think is more than we need to, on external studies, external recommendations, eighty thousand dollars on this one, eighty thousand dollars on that one. We have a lot of very good people that are in the current school system administration and sta, and teachers. We can lean on them and their expertise. We can come up with the same results we've gotten from some of those other outside expenditures. And find the ways in the budget we can maximize the pay for the teachers who are the frontline with the students every day, and as well as the bus drivers, because they're very important. They're transporting our little children to and from school every single day. So we need to make sure they're taken care of. Maybe a way we can do that instead of contracting that out is look at going to some sort of hybrid where the school system actually owns their own buses and maintains them. So, but we'd have to look at what the exact costs are that, and over the long run, working construction, it's much cheaper to own the equipment and operate it than it is to contract it out constantly.
Thank you, Mr. Marchio. And finally, on that question, Ms. McGuire, please.
So, much like with this, the educational staff, the negotiated contracts with the bus contractors are funded by the school system, but they are independent contractors, and what they do with their money is their independent choice. Now, they're in a competitive market. They want to have bus drivers. They want to meet their routes and stuff like that. So, the school system can provide more funding to the school bus contractors, with the expectation that the school bus contractors will pay that to bus drivers, but we can't require that. So that's kind of a challenge there, in terms of the influence that the board might have on supporting the bus con, the bus drivers. Regarding the educators, so, again, it's a contract negotiation activity, and it is a shared activity between the bargaining units and the educators. And I believe that if the goals are set in ways that everyone agrees that we are seeking a world-class school system, this is how much money it's going to cost over the next three years, and then we commit to that. I came on the school board at the financial crisis, and we did end up not paying steps and increases for many years. And then the school board, when more money became available, went back and, and did replacement steps and tried to bring it back up. But I've been a part of that. It's not fun. Nobody likes it.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. The next question is for Mr. Villanova, Mrs. Post, and Mrs. Calisi. And that question is, how will you achieve and measure the diverse and inclusive community that the Calvert County Public School System's website says you will nurture? How will you achieve and measure the diverse and inclusive community that the Calvert County Public Schools website says you, you as a board member will nurture? Mr. Villanova?
One more time, please.
How will you achieve and measure the diverse and inclusive community that the Calvert County Public Schools website says you as a board member will nurture?
Okay, so, how will achieve and measure? The measuring is going to be hard, because it's a moving target. So, how will I achieve it? You know, just, again, respecting and loving everyone for who they are, who they identify as. That's, that's, that's the biggest thing for me. Some of y'all don't know I'm a designer, and, gosh, almost ninety-five percent of the people that I interact with are part of the LGBTQ community. So, I, 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 achieving the standard, and again, I, I had, I had to be honest, I am kind of ignorant to the, to the standard itself, so I'm going to speak broadly, hopefully not attack the, the, the statement there, the policy. But I believe that achieving equality, I guess, for people who, who, without segregating or dividing anyone, I think that's important, because we're all human beings. We all bleed red. How we can measure it, again, you need to be engaged as a board member, obviously, having a conversation with the teachers, with the principals, the superintendents, getting their feel for, you know, issues, looking at the, the, the issues that come up, disciplinary issues. That's one good way of measuring issues. And I don't know if it's PPI issue in, in reference to identifying a person who's in a incident that's part of the LGBTQ community. However, that will definitely be a needed piece in order to identify, to, to identify and to, to help out measuring how the standard applies.
Thank you. Mrs. Post?
So I think that reviewing current policies to evaluate the success applicability, and to identify gaps in or modifications that maybe need to be addressed in those policies, I think that's a, a good way to, to measure if we know, if they're being applied consistently or infrequently, things like that. I also think that having boundaries and helping parents feel comfortable is a, is a good place to start. I also think that maybe sending a message that if you are just a regular old kid, whatever that means, that you are just as important as every other kid in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Calisi?
So I'm going to briefly address the previous question first about making sure teachers don't fall beyond the salary steps. First thing, don't touch the salary line item of the budget. I've heard in numerous board meetings, you know, just because it may be easier or simpler to pull money from there, even if it's going to get put back, blah, blah, blah. But just don't touch that line item as a prior, as a, as a first step. And then hopefully what's already there won't, you know, be tampered with. But I think we really need to figure out ways to generate more money for the school system. And that may be by motivating teachers, administrators, or others to find ways, you know, maybe parts of their job descriptions or parts of their goals. So we just got to get creative of how to bring more money in, because the, the same money's not going to rotate us so many times. And then, you know, increase efficiencies there. With regards to the diverse and inclusive, we need to understand the makeup of the community, and then seek out voices, so that we're getting different perspectives from different people, not just listen to who actively comes to us, who pass, who actively comes to us, but seek out the passive voices that we're not hearing from. And then ask the teachers what type of environment they feel they're in, and not just the teachers, all the educators in the system. Because if they don't feel like they're in an environment that is diverse or inclusive for them to work in, then we definitely aren't perpetuating that out for the students. So, you know, we start where we can start, with the population we can clearly get the numbers and measures for, and then work our way out from there.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi. The next question, the respondents will be Mrs. Post, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Villanova, and Ms. Calisi. And the question is, what is your opinion about using retirees and college students to tutor elementary school students, especially first and second graders? Are you aware of the research on the results of doing this? If so, what have these programs achieved? So the first person would be Mrs. Post.
So I am not aware of the research and what those, you know, those results and, and any achievement. I think that if we have an opportunity for grandparents, or college students, or high school students to, to participate with elementary or even middle school students, I think that's, that's awesome. And I would love, love, love to see more of that happening. I think it's great. It would also be great if you have a young person, a high school student, that's doing that mentoring or tutoring. And it's, it's a good opportunity and maybe an introduction to wanting to be a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Mr. Fowler?
I, I am personally not aware of the research in regards to retirees and college students tutoring elementary school students. I would assume that the outcomes would be positive, just, especially with retirees. The amount of life experience that they're carrying can only, you know, benefit our, our youth. I know personally, I've learned a lot from, like, the, the older people in my life. And I, I can't imagine, or I, I can imagine young, young elementary school students especially being very benefited, benefited by that same kind of wisdom. I do, however, think that if we are going to have people interacting with, like, students, especially that young, they do need to go through the process of being vetted, background checks, fingerprints, all the, all the, all the processes that teachers and substitute teachers and bus drivers and administrative assistants, everybody that works in the school system, the same steps they have to go through in order to work with, work within the school system. Those that are involved in a mentorship program like this would have to do the same, because the safety of the, the students is obviously the most paramount of, or, you know, most paramount of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Villanova?
Villanova, finally, I have a question I can answer multiples. So, first question, to answer the, the question at hand, yes, I definitely support it. Both of my parents are educators. What best way of implementing and relieving something that stresses them off with these teachers is to, is to bring on some retirees to help out, previous teacher retirees to help out with, with that load? I'm pretty sure there could be some type of stipend or some type of part-time fee that would be paid to them, but it would not be a full-size, I'm sorry, full-size teacher's pay that would be given to them. So I'm all about it. Ms. Post, she mentioned about mentorship, as far as having students coming in to teach. Again, obviously going through the safety parameters, but I think it's a huge way, and it's a gateway to bringing on new growth for the community. Going back to a question in reference to relationship with commissioners, actually, commissioners and the budget was one that, was one of the questions. I think having that relationship with the commissioners is huge, because they're the ones that hold the purse strings. Things happen. One thing that happened recently was the, the bus contract. The bus contract happened because they had X dollar amount. We went through COVID, the price of gas went up, diesel went up, so they needed more money. Again, I understand how contracts work. I'm in the contract world myself. They asked for, they won the contract offer a certain dollar amount. So therefore, they have that individual bus company is responsible for paying those individual bus drivers. So it's a, it's a conversation that, that is not at the B O E level, it's actually at the contractor and the, and the bus driver's level. Another question I have for a couple of minutes here. I tried.
Sorry, sir.
I really did. I really did.
Ms. Calisi, you're, you're last on this question.
So I'm going to be double dipping on some questions too, but y'all, y'all, y'all will see where when I get there. But my opinion on it, I'm not aware of the research specifically that's being addressed in this question, but you can feel free to reach out to me, and we can, we can further extrapolate on that. But I do believe you have to use what you have in order to provide what you need. So if they meet the requirements and they're vetted and all of that, then I believe they should be in the system, because also generational diversity is important in the school system. And, you know, speaking to attracting and retaining, college students can be having experiences that make them want to stay or come to the, to the, to the school system and work there further. You know, the older or the retirees can be, you know, mentoring or giving information to others to help them understand where they want to go, or which directions they want to go in, because just the, the teacher role is not the only role within the school system. And so I think it's important to remember that we want educators to receive the pay that they deserve, but receiving the pay that you deserve does not equate to money being your motivator. We still need to assess what, what motivators exist for educators, and, you know, why they're teaching, because money will bring you in. Money is not why you stay. But if you're being underpaid, yes, Maslow's hierarchy of needs says that you're going to make sure that you get what you need to supply shelter and food and all of that, but that doesn't make money your motivator. So we still need to be really focused on asking and finding out what our teachers' actual motivators are. And then if some of their motivators are mentorship or working with different people and things like that, again, going back to the opinion about retirees and college students, they might be able to help to create the culture that will work for the teachers that are already present.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi.
Okay, the next question is for Ms. McGuire. I'm going to mess this up. Mr. Marchio and Mrs. Hall. As a mentor in one of the high schools, I've noticed the minority involvement in extracurricular activities is low. We all know that getting into college requires a well-rounded student. What would you do to encourage all students, including minorities and low-income students, to participate? I'll repeat the question. As a ment, this is not my question. This is from the audience. As a mentor in one of the high schools, I've noticed the minority involvement in extracurricular activities is low. We all know that getting into college requires a well-rounded student. What would you do to encourage all students, including minorities and low-income students, to participate? Ms. McGuire, you're the first one to answer that.
So I'm sure that there are a lot of reasons why children don't participate in after-school activities. As an active choice, I respect that. You can do what you want with your time out of school, or you can stay in, at school and participate in extracurriculars. But that requires transportation. In Calvert County public schools, we have not been able to figure that piece out. When my kids were in middle school, there was an after-school bus occasionally. And Northern Middle School to Huntington, it was like a two-hour drive, because they, all the drop-offs. So, that is challenging, transportation for all students who want to participate. And we, when we were on the school, when I was on the school board, we asked for the C A C to study this issue, and, and it's, it's practically unsolvable. Like, it's just so frustrating. But I would be happy to continue to have that discussion and figure out ways that we might be able to have activity buses for students who want to stay after school, but their, their parents are not available to pick them up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. Mr. Marchio?
Well, like, with any issue, you got to figure out why. Why is the involvement low? Is it solely transportation? Are there other issues you need to look at? Transportation standpoint, that is something that potentially could be solved by internalizing some of the busing, and the school could control that, and that could help get them to participate. I think some of the problem is that the college focus on having all these extracurriculars to get somebody into college, I personally think it's a little overblown. It's not really as needed. Not everybody also needs to go to a four-year college. I went to a two-year school. It's worked out pretty good so far. You can also go to trade school, which is, kids, we need more to do, is working in the construction industry. We need more people to do skilled trades, whether it be an electrician, a plumber, HVAC technician, or something of that nature. But really, you need to figure out why they're not participating, if that is the case. And then figure out how we can best solve that problem. If it's transportation, we just have to get creative and figure out how, and get as much involvement as we can from everybody in the community to better themselves and make themselves as well-rounded as possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Hall?
Right. As far as I know, transportation is available on certain days in certain schools for other activities. And the school is supposed, is, the school provides the transportation for games and stuff like that off of campus, as far as I am aware of, for the high school level that my kids have gone to. For my opinion, as to why the, the participation is low, I would have to say is because of grades. Grades is a huge impact for sports. If you look at the sports, if you look at the sports information for Calvert County public schools, you have to have a certain amount per grade. And there are so many kids at the middle school, element, like, all the way through, elementary school, middle school, and high school level that are falling through the cracks. Their grades are, they don't even meet requirements to make the sports teams in school. And I even found a loophole for my twelve-year-old son. And I even found a loophole for my 12-year-old son in January or February, and the sports team wouldn't allow him to participate because of his, he had an IEP and he was still failing classes. I found the loophole that he could play with the team and practice with the team, but just was not allowed to play the actual games. And we just don't have enough of it because the grades probably are one of the most impactful things for low participation in sports.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. The next question, the four candidates who would be asked to respond are Mr. Villanova, Mr. Marcio, Mrs. Hall, and Mr. Fowler. And the question is, if elected to the Board of Education, how would you work with current members with whom you may not agree? I'll repeat the question. If elected to the Board of Education, how would you work with the current members with whom you may not agree? And Mr. Villanova's first.
So again, I'm very used to this environment where everyone does not agree. We live in a democracy. We live in a democracy where people have different thoughts, different perspectives on things, so I am willing and I know how to go across the table, go across the boardroom and have a communication, talk offline. Let's, let's take a pause and let's figure out, how can we figure out this issue, this one-stopping issue that we have, how can we agree to do? I hate the term, I agree, but I agree to disagree. I think that's a very passive way of doing that. I think we should find a way, because it's not about just us, it's about the kids. So my way is cultivating relationships, and I've, I've learned best, if you have a relationship, not so much always in the office, but a relationship with, you know, because we're gonna be there for the next four years for each other. Having a relationship outside of the boardroom is very helpful. We get a, we get a tone for each and every, that's one of our thoughts on how we think, how we understand things, I think that's important. I'm gonna jump to a question in reference to pay and keeping the teachers on board. No, everyone's not generated or motivated by pay. No, you have some teachers that actually genuinely want to teach, regardless if they're paying, getting paid pensions or not. The bigger issue is this, I think it's not fair that we have these passionate teachers that are teaching in these schools in Calvert County, but they can't live here. That's, that's totally unfair. So that's a conversation that I would definitely reach across over to the commissioners and figure out, how can we fit, how can we fix this? I was in a forum with them yesterday, listening to them, and they were talking about how they can fit, figure out, single-family homes, not high-density, but single-family homes for our EMT, police officers, teachers, and those, and those, the working force of Calvert County.
Thank you, Mr. Villanova. Mr. Marcio?
Damien touched on this quite a bit, and I agree with it wholeheartedly. Not everybody is always going to agree, and I think that's an absolutely great thing, and it's critical to having a successful board and a successful school system. You don't want everybody agreeing the whole time, that's how you come up with group think and mob rule. We need to have relationships and build the relationships so that where we have our differences, we can work through those, know better how to communicate with each other, and come to an agreement that's gonna best suit the entirety of our school system and more importantly, our children. So that can be done by building those relationships outside of, you know, the couple monthly or bi-monthly board meetings, three times a month, whatever board meetings they are. You've gotta make the effort to build the relationship, and everybody has to do it, and everybody has to buy in. And if you can do that, you can get past any of those differences you have and find out where you do have agreements, because at the end of the day, I'm willing to bet, we'll differ on a lot of things, but we probably have way more agreements than we do disagreements. You've just gotta get past the initial disagreement, build the relationship, and then foster it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marcio. Finally, Mr. Fowler.
So if, if I'm elected to the board and I'm on there with people that I don't necessarily agree with, I think the one thing that we all should remember is that everyone that's elected to the board is there for altruistic reasons. We're there because we want to do something better for, for the community's children at large. How we go about doing that, or fixing issues or addressing problems, may be different, but I think if everyone understands that the reason we're there is the same, and it's for a good purpose, and having the children be, be what we have in mind, it'll be easier to move forward with, with disagreements. That being said, I think that some of the keys to working with those that you might disagree with is making sure you genuinely, genuinely listen to each other. Don't just watch them while they talk, listen to what they have to say. They might, they might have something that they can teach you that you might not have, might not have thought of before. It's important not to take anything personally that they, that they say, because no one is there to personally attack each other. Conversely, it's also important not to insult each other. To stay on topic with, with what we're talking about, don't let a disagreement in one area spread into another. And then finally, it's very important to make sure you look at any disagreement from the other person's point of view as well, because they could be seeing something in a way that would be very enlightening for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mrs. Hall, did I skip you? I'm sorry. It's your turn.
It's okay. I'd rather go last than first. All right. If I was elected, how would I work with the current members with whom I do not agree with? Now, I am in and out of IEP meetings fairly consistently throughout the year. Four out of the five of my kids have IEPs, from one single disability to two of them having multiple disabilities. Do I agree with the staff members and administration in those IEP teams every single time? No, I don't. Do I disrespect them? No, I don't. Do I fight for what I think that my kid for that IEP needs or would fit for them? Yes, I do. I am very transparent. I wear my heart on my sleeve. I will fight for all of the kids, for what they need. Federal law states that all of our kids deserve free access to appropriate, free, appropriate public education. Kids who have IEPs are, are covered under federal law under IDEA. They don't have any more or less rights under FAP, but everyone deserves free, appropriate public education. And I for one, will fight for the needs of all the kids, not just mine, but for all of them. And I will do that very respectfully. And team-building activities could help, meeting in the middle, dismiss, dismissing the meeting at that time and reconvening in 10, 15, 20 minutes after everyone cools down would work as well. But I want to work with the team.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. This is the last question before we go into closing. And the three people responding to this would be Ms. Calisi, Mrs. Post, and Mrs. McGuire. And this is a long question, so be attentive. How will you support special needs students? Ms. McGuire? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm dyslexic here. Ms. Calisi, I'm sorry.
Oh, you were being facetious when you said it was a long one.
Yes.
You were waiting for the rest.
Yeah.
I was trying to wake you up. I was trying to wake you up.
I was waiting for, no, I was up, I was waiting for the rest. Wow. I need to not eat up this time with this thought. How will I support special needs students? By any means necessary. I am a parent of a special needs student. Part of why I ran initially in 2020 was because I was working to figure out how to do things to help my child, and in that journey, met with the members of the board because I figured I would be in front of them at some point for that journey, and realized that while I can be effective in doing what I need to do for my child, I have now been partnered with and advocated for and connected with many other special needs families within Calvert County Public Schools, and so my journey now extends to them. And I feel that if our school system is supportive of the special needs children, by virtue of that, we will be supportive of everyone. Because that will, it, it, it will, to something Mr. Fowler said earlier, be our greatest show of altruism and, and support within, within the school system. I'm really flustered on this question because it's very personal to me and near and dear. I think it's very important and impactful that every board member needs to know information about the special needs component of the school system. If you don't know what an IEP is, I don't know how you can sit as a board member, because if you need to be fully educated on everything that a parent comes in front of you and says, how can you then bring forth a decision or an opinion on something of which you know nothing about? But that would extend to any topic. So, so many things. So many things.
Thank you. That was a very short run-on sentence. Thank you very much. Mrs. Post?
So I have, through a number of experiences in speaking with friends, other, other parents who have children the same age as mine, talking to teachers and talking to, to folks that work in special education, and really beginning to learn and understand the IEP process. I have also had a recent personal experience, because one of my sons has now newly a 504. So I am firsthand beginning to understand, just the tip of the iceberg, what that process is like and how many steps are involved. I think that we need to make sure that we're focusing and making sure that the money allotted to special education and the resources that we should have are available, and they may be consistently applied in, in addition to, to any kind of training that would be required to help all the students and the teachers in the classrooms. I'll tell you also that my husband said while my son has a 504, he thinks that I should go talk to somebody because I think, he thinks that I need one too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Ms. McGuire?
So I believe that supporting special education students starts with supporting special education teachers. And a lot of that comes through the Special Education Department, where I'm not, I've never really been clear on how all that works, even after 12 years on the board. We would get reports from special education, and they are constrained by law, they have to deliver certain services, and everything is super bureaucratic, because everything has to be documented. And so as a school board member, I would be interested in seeing if there is a way to lift some of that bureaucracy off the teachers. And this could mean more staff assisting teachers, special education teachers with some of the, I'm sorry, the reporting requirements, there's just a ton of reporting requirements. As a school board member, I think about students with special needs as having mostly unique needs, like you can't, you can't write a policy that will cover all of it. Everything happens in the moment for that child that day. So we have to have skilled educators that have the supports they need to meet the needs of the special education population. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Ms. McGuire. Thank you all for your answers to these questions, and we are now ready for closing, and you will have a minute and a half to make a final closing statement. And the order selected randomly will be for Ms. McGuire to start, then Ms. Calisi, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Villanova, Ms., Mrs., Ms. Hall, Mrs. Hall, Mrs. Post, and Mr. Marcio. So, starting off with Mrs. McGuire.
So when we started this evening, I outlined what I think of a world-class school system, what that looks like. So now let me tell you how I think we get there. We get there first by at least three board members and hopefully five, all agreeing on the definition of a world-class school system. If you get that, then you do the piece with the educator negotiation units to get agreement on what the elements of a world-class school system are, and then each article of negotiation is targeting that world-class school system. And finally, the school board passes policies and budgets focused on a world-class school system, and they evaluate a superintendent, and they do oversight, looking for a world-class school system, so that, that is the focus. There's gonna be a lot of distractions, there's going to be a lot of other things that need to be addressed, but I do believe that if we say every decision is towards that goal, that we can get there. Please vote for Tracy McGuire. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Calisi, please.
Sorry. Make no mistake about it, I support the community of Calvert County. I support its students, its faculty, its parents, its non-parents. The way that children are nurtured and taught by the school system impacts all of us. If we want Calvert County to progress and thrive, we have to understand the significance of how the future adults are educated. I'm not focused on politics, I'm not focused on my personal politics, I am a conduit for all of you and the students and children that you have in our school system. So regardless of what your opinions are versus what my opinions are, that's not the matter of being an elected member of the board. I'm here to listen, I'm here to have the conversation. If you've reached out to me, you're aware of that, and I hope that you'll vote for me because of that, and not just because I support or say what you want me to say or not want me to say, but because you know that I'll listen, and if there's merit in what you have to say, I will work to figure out what we can do to progress that forward, because we all live here and our children are growing here.
Thank you, Ms. Calisi. Next, Mr. Fowler.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'd like to thank the moderators for being here and helping with this once again, and everybody watching at home on YouTube. It means a lot to me that everyone is taking enough time out of their day to try to get to know all of us a little bit better so you can make a more informed decision on who you'd like to vote for. I, as, as far as myself, I, I grew up in Calvert County, I know the area very well. I went to high school here. I, I just want to try to give the, the young, young people and students of the county the type of education and childhood I had growing up. I feel like as a whole, the county's done a great job for me, and I just want to try to pay it forward for them. So, everybody, please go out and vote on July 19th in the primary. If not for myself, for one of these fine candidates, if somebody has said something that, you know, that you agree with, that you think you want to cast your vote for, please do, and let's make the process work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Villanova, please.
So, here we go. Last time we're gonna see each other in this type of forum, so I, it's been an awesome ride. I appreciate the earliest time that I've been out there on the campaign trail, at the baseball fields, handing out my palm card with my kids in tow. I appreciate the feedback. I appreciate everyone who's, who's reached out to me on Facebook in some form or fashion. I really do appreciate the encouragement, but I'm doing this for my kids. I'm doing it for my kids, and I'm doing it for the kids of Calvert County. I have a lot of things on my plate, but this is a very important thing that I placed on my plate on purpose. We moved here for, for the schools, and I, my, my job as a board member is to make sure that standard still stands true for my duration, however long it'll be. I definitely gonna need each and every one of you all's support for the early voting of July 7th to the 14th, and on the primary on the 19th of July. So I ask for your vote, for the ones on the, watching the YouTube, I ask for your vote also for the primary. You can vote for two BOE members, and out of the two, four of the most, the four that have the most votes move to the general election. So I thank you, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villanova. Mrs. Hall?
Okay. All right. So many of you know me as Tina. My husband and I have lived in Huntingtown, have, live in Huntingtown with our five kids. Three of our children go to the elementary school that I went to. I know, I'm gonna cry. Don't, I'm sorry. That's because I know what's coming. While I might be the least politically experienced candidate, I have an abundance of hands-on experience and passion. I have been involved heavily in my five children's schools, as they, as they have attended more than 16 different schools for various regional programs, summer school and ESY. While raising multiple special needs children, I have also worked closely with the Special Education Department for the last, for nearly the last 10 years. Because of this, I have developed a unique perspective. Okay, so with the little bit of time that I have left, okay, so I have a hands-on example. This is the general education classroom that is called the Inclusion Program. Inclusion, not inclusive. So these are all the kids that sit in there. Special Ed students. Special ed students, they don't fit. Their needs are not met. And what do we do for them? If they don't fit, where do they go? I just spent an entire year of my son's first grade year fighting for him not to be in a general education classroom. And three weeks ago, I won. He's going to the Maryland School for the Blind, after being placed in the general education classroom, feeling that that is the, that's the fit that all of these kids are being put into. And it's not fair. It wasn't fair to the class, it wasn't fair to my kid. Our entire community suffered, and my kid was screaming that it wasn't right. And it took, it took the school an entire year and 17 IEP meetings to finally make a good decision for him. It shouldn't be this hard. It shouldn't. It should be an easy win. Our kids deserve better.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Ms. Post?
Well, I was going to close with a joke, but I feel like it would be inappropriate now. No, I'm just kidding, it really wasn't. And I'm so sorry that you are, you're feeling that way, and I'm glad that things worked out for your son. I have four children currently enrolled in Calvert County Public Schools, and I am also a lifelong county resident and graduate of Calvert County Public Schools. If elected, my priorities will be to focus on approving a sound fiscal budget, reviewing those current policies to evaluate success, and identify gaps or modifications that need to be addressed, increasing community engagement, including advocating for removing the 10-person speaking limit, ensuring adequate staffing at every school, and including those like safety resource officers, behavioral specialists, guidance counselors, teacher staff. I could go on, but you get the point. Bus drivers. Transparency in the lessons in the curriculum with adequate opportunities for parents to review and/or opt out before those curriculum or those lessons are shared with the students. Resources and money obligated to special education are being applied consistently and effectively. Advocating also at the state and national levels. I want to ensure that there is success for all students and that all parents, teachers, and staff, and the community at large have a voice. All registered voters can vote for the Board of Election in the primary, and I humbly ask for your vote on July 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Mr. Marchio?
Now, thanks to everybody tonight. And I just want to say, it's pretty incredible that we're having a Board of Education election. We actually have a primary. There's nine people running for two seats. Whether we all agree or not, it's pretty remarkable. There's that many of us that want to put ourselves out there to make it better for our children and for the community. You know, Tina mentioned a second, she's, you know, not politically experienced. I'm not either. Most of us aren't. This isn't about politics to me. It's about my kids. Got two little boys, and doing what's best for them, and trying to improve the school system for everybody. By doing what's best for my kids and taking care of my boys is my primary job as a father. I feel that's what will help everybody else out as well. You know, I don't have all the answers. I don't know all the details. However, nobody's going to outwork me. I'll be there every day. I worked there long. I don't need the job, but I'll do it for the betterment of my children and everybody else's. You know? But same time, I'm not there for political gain, nobody's going to notice me. I'm also a football official, and best football officials, when you walk off the field, nobody knows who was there, who you were. And that'll be my goal. I'll do all the work and just get things done. So, that, vote for me on July 19th, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchio. This concludes our forum, but I would like to thank the timers and the bell ringer for keeping us for some time. And thank you again for Calvert Broadcast. Those that are looking at it live stream, it'll still be available to you. And I thank you for joining us this evening. As a reminder, elections began with early voting Thursday, July the 7th through Thursday, July the 14th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily at the Calvert County Election Board on Duke Street and Prince Frederick, the Southern Community Center in Lusby, and the trailer in the parking lot of the Fairview Library. And those of you that have mail-in ballots, you can already start voting and checking those out, and putting them in the mail, or either put them in a ballot drop box at one of those three locations. Election Day is Tuesday, July 19th.
Finally, we, I will add something that's not on the script. I've been involved in a number of community groups, and I think that the League of Women Voters has done an extraordinary job of organizing this event. Thank you. That being the case, we hope that you have taken some literature about the League of Women Voters and the primary election. Please consider joining our organization. The fact that Malcolm and I are here as co-moderators says that it's a little misleading to hear the League of Women Voters, but at the same time, it is the women who have been driving the work and doing a phenomenal job. Please travel safely, and don't forget to vote. Thank you very much.